Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, thank you. Morning, thank you for joining us for the September Town Meeting. I'm Mike Rambros, for those of you who don't know me. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome some new residents since we last convened. My glasses. Mr. and Mrs. Harold and Inez Cohen in apartment 2206, Mr. Carl Savant and Mrs. Silvana De Silva in apartment 2302, and Mr. and Mrs. Peter and Kristen Enough in apartment 504. So we'd like to just welcome those folks. I think I saw their pictures up on the board, so please take a look and make them feel welcome. To get started, I'd like to invite Maria LaSala, our Spiritual Care Coordinator, to come on up and open our meeting.
Good morning, friends. I'm Maria LaSala, the Spiritual Care Coordinator. It's good to be with you today. I recently read an article in the Science section of the New York Times supporting the practice of random acts of kindness. The idea that kindness can be good for our well-being is nothing new, right? Really, who wouldn't want to support the idea of practicing random acts of kindness? I've often been the recipient of such acts. How about you? Anyone here ever experienced someone offering you a kindness that you didn't expect? Yeah, I thought so. You know, the Whitney Center community does a very good job at practicing kindness. I see it happening here every day. Big and small actions, resident to resident, team member to team member, team member to resident, and of course, resident to team member. I don't think we could be the community we are if we didn't engage in those acts of kindness. Now, curiously, the article didn't limit itself to simply lifting up the idea of practicing random acts of kindness. The article went one step farther, inviting us to see the ripple effect of random acts of kindness. Researchers discovered that people consistently underestimate how much those random acts of kindness were actually appreciated. They concluded that not knowing your positive impact could stand in the way of people wanting to offer and engage consistently in acts of kindness in daily life. Why do you think we underestimate the power of kind acts? One research study indicated that we don't think the positive impact of our behaviors is as positive as it is. People tend to think that what they are giving or doing is relatively inconsequential. But here's the thing the research scholars noticed. Recipients, the recipients of these kind acts are less likely to think along those lines. They consider the gesture to be significantly more meaningful because they are thinking, wow, someone did something nice for me. And, as we all know, whether we are practitioners and/or receivers alike, acts of kindness rarely backfire, and they don't take much effort. We just need to remember the skills and talents we have and turn them into an offering for another. I'm honored and grateful to be a part of a community who, especially in these weary and worrisome times, understand the power of kindness to lift our spirits and make our days and nights better. So let's continue to do what we do best. Those acts of kindness are ever before us. And friends, as I do each month, I invite you to pause with me. The people of Great Britain bid farewell to the Queen on Monday. Today, we bid farewell to those friends a bit closer to our home and lives. This morning, I invite you to remember Ninon Shiet, Natalie Fen, Rhoda Cohen, and Hanalor Lori Horsh. May we give thanks for their lives well-lived among us. I want you to know that the spiritual care programs continue. The Jewish High Holidays are approaching, and I invite you to make sure you check your K4 app and look to the digital screens all around our campus for details and updates about how we are gathering, where we are gathering, and when we are gathering. I wish you all well in these days to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Maria. You know, kindness is an interesting, interesting thing. It does wonders for the person giving the act of kindness, right? And sometimes, we may hinge the act based on what we expect an outcome to be, but rather doing it from a place of just grace is often enough. So, thank you for that. Speaking of grace, why don't we all pull out our cellphones and just put them on silent so we don't get the looks from everyone else when our phone goes off? Just a little reminder, right? Susie Weisenger, hi. Susie is the President of the Residents Council, and she has a one quick thing that she would like to announce.
One quick thing, and it really relates to you.
Oh.
So you don't have to go far.
Oh, okay.
On behalf of all the residents, I just want to tell you how much your future planning session was appreciated. I hear so many comments about residents saying that they were so happy to have had a voice in giving suggestions. So, thank you for that, and let's have more of them.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you, I really appreciate that. That's cool to hear. We're going to talk a little bit more about that today. In fact, that might take up the whole agenda today. But before we do that, I want to ask Teri to come on up, and she's going to say a few words.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, everyone. It's good to be here with you. You know, our philanthropy program, hopefully you've gotten your appreciation brochure. If you didn't, let me know. But you can see the amazing things that we've accomplished together over the last three years, and just even in the past year alone, there's been so much. And today, I want to do something a little special, but I do have another good news announcement, and for that, I'd like to invite our Spiritual Care Coordinator Maria LaSala and Alyssa Kissel to come on up.
Thanks, Teri. You're welcome. Go ahead. So I'm glad to stand before you again this morning and delighted to introduce to you Alyssa Kissel, who will be serving this year as a Spiritual Care Intern. Alyssa is a third-year, final-year student at Yale Divinity School, and we have been, I have been working for a number of years to try to figure out a way to encourage students studying as to be chaplains to connect with this wonderful community. And this year, due to a wonderful gift, we are able to invite Alyssa Kissel to serve among us. Some of you have already had a chance to meet her. She's attended a welcoming, the Shabbat service, and a Sunday morning church service, but you will begin to see her out and about in the community. And I hope that you will take advantage of her learning and her willingness to sit and talk and understand her role as a Spiritual Care Coordinator. So I'm going to have Alyssa just introduce herself briefly to you, and then we'll turn it back to you, Teri.
Good morning. So I... Can you hear me better? Okay. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm really excited. I feel honored and blessed to be here. The people who I've met so far have been incredible, and I can't wait to meet more of you. I'm so interested in hearing your stories, your lives, and I hope you know that I feel honored every time I speak to one of you. So thank you for having me, and I can't wait to get to know all of you more.
So it's delightful to have you here, Alyssa. And this is an act of kindness, but a very meaningful one. I want to say thank you to Dr. Peter Marr. He made a gift in memory of his wife Angela, and spiritual care meant so much to Angela. So this has a lot of meaning, and let it ripple through our community and share with each other. But again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to deviate a little bit from the sort of routine agenda of department reports. If we have time, we'll do those, but at the end of today's meeting. What I'd like to do is continue the discussion that Mrs. Weisenger alluded to earlier, the strategic discussions that we had last Monday and Tuesday. During those talks, I mentioned that I was working on a project since February 2021 with the board, and I was hoping to have something to announce soon. So here we are. I can announce it. Some of you beat me to the punch. I know you already know. It was in the newspaper, in the legal notice section, and it was an agenda item on the Town of Hamden Legislative Council meeting. So, the reason that this was in the legal section and on the agenda for the Legislative Council is that we are seeking bond financing, like we have in the past, and I think I mentioned this at the meetings, right? We're seeking bond financing like we did in 2009, like we did in 2019, through the town in order to fund a board-approved acquisition of Meadow Mills across the street.
Yeah?
Yeah. So that, yes, Robert, that was the legal notice you cut out and brought. Thank you. So, let's give a little history, and then we can... Really, my objective today is to take your questions, which most of them I'm not going to be able to answer because we haven't worked out the answers yet. But I want to hear your specific thinking about this goal that we have. So, most of you know the history. I went over the history last week when we talked, how we've been searching for a long time for the best way to elevate our offering when it comes to memory support. In our conversations last week, we identified a lot of the shortfalls that we have with the program up there. We do a great job programmatically. Our staff does a wonderful job with the space that they have. But, as we talked about, we owe it to our residents, our customers up there, our families, and our team members to create a space where we can really improve the quality of life for everyone concerned with memory support. And this acquisition will allow us to do that. So, if you're not familiar, Meadow Mills was part of a, I don't know, were they national HTR, right? Manor Care, HTR Manor Care was a big company that created these memory support communities that were purposefully designed and built to accommodate dementia care, dementia services for folks who would live there. And they did a bunch of these, and the way they designed them was fantastic. So this was built in 1998, the one across the street, and it's designed in four households. So it's four pods of 15 rooms to each pod, and each pod has its own dining room, living room, kitchen, right, that is just for those 15 residents living in those pods. They're free to go to anywhere, but it's dedicated to them. And the staff is assigned, for the most part, to those households. And so it's a consistent staff that really take on, in partnership with the residents who live there, to take on the running of the household. Everything from, you know, serving food, to washing the dishes, to doing laundry, to, you know, that kind of stuff, right? It's really a team effort. So, we had this suggested to us years ago, back in 2019, when we were looking at the big picture of building out the campus and maybe building a new building, that sort of thing, and the cost was just exorbitant, as I explained last week. And it was recommended, hey, why don't we look across the street? And I wasn't too optimistic about it at the time, but I did, and I found out that the Meadow Mills is, at that time and still currently owned by a for-profit organization that has about 30 properties, all up and down the East Coast, from Florida. We're the furthest north and east, and they go out as far west as Illinois. They're managed by a couple of different management firms. One is in Toronto, Canada. The other is headquartered in Gary, Indiana, or no, I'm sorry, Fort Wayne, Indiana. And then the ownership structure is, I can't quite figure it out. But, be that as it may, I approached it back then, didn't get a response, and kind of left it. COVID hit, so we didn't, you know, we didn't go back to it. But last year, when we started, when this came up again, I asked the board if they would sanction me spending my time exploring this. And so last February 2021, I started making inquiries, and throughout that entire time, we were working on, just exploring what it might look like. And so in, towards the end of last year, we reached agreement with the ownership, signed a purchase and sale agreement, and an operating transfer agreement, which would allow us to engage in some due diligence work. We needed those agreements for confidentiality purposes, for sort of the rules of the game, you know, how we might engage in this exploration. And so we started doing that work. It wasn't until the end of last year that we were able, I'm sorry, we started that work on those contracts, those agreements, at the end of last year. It wasn't until June of this year that we reached a conclusion with those agreements and could really start the due diligence work. Due diligence means that we were looking into anything that we could get documented, everything from their financial performance, to their structure, to contracts that they might have, all of the business stuff. So we started looking at that in June. And then, as part of this process, we've had a engineering firm do a survey, similar to a title survey that you might do for your home. We also did a full environmental survey, looking at what's in the ground. You know, we want to know, what are the risks associated with this thing that we might not be able to see? So we got that completed. We got a full real estate and business appraisal completed by a professional firm. So that's been delivered. We want to know, whatever we pay for it, is it, you know, is it market price? Are we paying a premium? So we want to know where we fell at on that. We had another construction management engineering firm do what's called a building conditions assessment. So they actually walked through the place. They looked at all of the systems, the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electrical. They looked at the roof, all of that stuff. They provided us with a report based on their, you know, it wasn't an invasive study because they couldn't open up walls or anything like that. But based on their analysis, there weren't any red flags, anything like that. I think the roof is a shingle roof, probably needs to be redone five to seven years, something like that. And there were some other things they pointed out, but no showstoppers. So we got all of those reports. We've done a whole financial feasibility analysis. So we've looked at their operation, payroll, expenses, revenue, all of that stuff. We've evaluated what that looks like, and then layered on what it might look like if we borrowed money to buy it. And so that all gets packaged into a financial feasibility analysis that's done by an outside firm to let us know, is this worthwhile? Can we afford it? Is it worthwhile doing? All of that stuff has been happening these past months. So we've had various team members involved. Jeff Devaney, as the Vice President for Finance, has been intimately involved with the numbers, working with some outside firms, trying to get those financial statements reconciled to try to figure it out. So, when I came to you last week, I was hoping to make it public that we were looking. The board hadn't voted yet. Now, because the ownership was a little gun-shy about making a public announcement because they don't want it to impact, and we wouldn't want it to impact their business over there, right? Their staff could get scared, their families might wonder what's happening, and it could affect their business. That would be bad for all of us. So they asked me to keep it quiet for a little bit longer, and so I did. But what that allowed for us to do, fortuitously, was to really engage in a conversation about the memory support and the health center, health services in general, more organically. It wasn't in response to this potential move. So I think that worked out really well, because what you articulated, for me, what I heard, was a lot of the justification for why we might do something like this. In fact, some of you suggested that we take a look at this. So after we had those meetings, we met with the Board of Directors later last week, presented all of this work. I had been keeping them up to speed the whole time. We were working through a committee called the Strategic Thinking Committee, and that was sort of the liaison to the full board. So I was working with them, updating them, letting them know what we were finding out. So last week, the board, all of that culminated in a vote, and the board unanimously voted to move forward with the acquisition. They felt that it was a risk worth taking, that we knew enough about the property over there, about the business over there, to move forward with the financing. Then on Monday, so that allowed us to go forward. On Monday, we had the first meeting with the town. Their Economic and Development Committee had looked at the tax-exempt aspect of the financing. They approved that unanimously. The meeting started at 7:00 PM, and it was at 10:42 that we came up on the agenda. So that was fun, waiting on Zoom for that. But we had done a lot of pre-work with the mayor, with the Legislative Council members. So I was on the call, but no one asked me any questions. That was very different than the two past financings. There was a lot more sort of risk-ringing and, you know, about what it might mean to the town and so on. But we've learned about this mechanism over the years. So the next step for the financing is that the Town of Hamden needs to now approve what's called a bond resolution. So the tax exemption part is fine. Now it needs to go to the full Legislative Council, and they just need to approve the mechanism according to the state statute to allow for this financing. The town acts as what's called a conduit issuer, so there's no risk to the town. In fact, we pay them to provide this service, and they are simply a conduit for us to go and market tax-exempt bonds to raise the money for the acquisition. That vote goes to Legislative Council, hopefully on their consent agenda, meaning it shouldn't be any discussion, on October 3rd. Hopefully, it doesn't get put off because it's a full agenda or whatever it might be. But assuming we get that vote on October 3rd, we will then start to market the bonds through our investment banker, which is Ziegler. Is there a national firm that does these financings? They did the refinancing in 2019, and they're prepared to do this. They need about a month or so for those bonds to market. They already, they have a whole slate of investors that they typically market to. Chances are, for this amount, and you'll see, if you find that legal notice, you'll see there's an amount in there that says not to exceed $20 million. The real total price is going to be somewhere around 17, 18, and it involves two components. It involves the acquisition of Nextdoor, and ultimately, part of that funding will go to the sixth floor. Once residents transition from the sixth floor and it's empty, that section is empty, we will convert those apartments back into saleable inventory for independent living. And they will be combined, because they're all smaller apartments up there, they'll be combined, and then we'll reintroduce those into the inventory and we'll sell those. The combination of the sixth-floor conversion and the operation across the street cover the debt for the bonds. If we were to try to finance it with just the operation from across the street, we probably couldn't take it on. So the revenue from the sixth floor actually contributes to the debt service. Okay? So that's how financially it's going to work, but it does cover it, right? So from a financial perspective, this does not affect the fees here at Whitney Center. I can anticipate that to be a question, because the financing package is self-supporting. Okay? We feel very optimistic that we'll be able to sell those apartments relatively soon after we get them ready. So we'll have the entry fees and the monthly service fees coming in from those. It'll be a total of eight apartments up there that we'll reintroduce to the marketplace. We took all those apartments out of inventory back in 2012 when we did this, when we converted the six-four. So, that's happening. We anticipate closing the financing by November 3rd. It may happen a couple of days before. If we don't get the vote on October 3rd, it may slip a couple of weeks into November. We recognize the challenge with Thanksgiving on the horizon, right? When you go out to the market, there's also the volatility of the market and the timing in terms of the interest rate, so we really have to look at that. But that's generally the overall timing. In the meantime, while that's happening, we will be talking to our constituents, our residents, Thrive at Home members, all of our team members. I've set up another round of meetings these two days to give this talk and to get questions. We're talking to the family members of our, and the residents, if they want to participate, who are living on the sixth floor in memory support right now as well, because for them, you can imagine that there's going to be angst, right? Number one, it's change. Not many of us deal with change just well in general. Number two, it's going to affect their life, you know? They're eventually going to be moving. And so that's a traumatic, traumatic event. And so we want to be very respectful and thoughtful about that process. So we'll be having these conversations. I was on the phone, what's today, Thursday? Tuesday, I was on the phone with the ownership structure for Meadow Mills, and they shared that they were going to, they were going to talk their staff and families yesterday and today. So all of this is happening coincidentally, so there shouldn't be, you know, for the few of you who knew about this because you read it in the paper or heard someone, hopefully it didn't leak too much where it affected them negatively. hopefully it didn't leak too much where it affected them negatively. But they're talking to their team today. On October 6th, we're scheduled, we're trying to schedule a joint meeting where I and a few members of our team will go over to Meadow Mills, join their ownership, and talk to the, the team members and family and residents over there. So we anticipate again by November 3rd or some point to be done with, with this whole process. And then we'll, we'll, we can actually get into the building to do a little bit more learning about how things are going over there. We don't, we don't, we have enough humility, I think, as a management team, as an organization, not to think that we have all the answers, right? So we don't want to go over there, you know, thinking we're just going to go change things and make it ours. What we want to do is go, once we can get in the building and work with the, with the team members and the residents there, we want to learn what they're doing. We want to take a look for two, three months. I'm not sure what that exact timeframe will be to observe. See what they're doing, see what they're doing well, see what we can learn from them. If, you know, I, I'll tell you that if we were to have built the building ourselves here on this campus, we would have built it with that design or something very close. Because they, they were very thoughtful. It's a, it's a great design, and, and I'm going to ask a couple of people to come up and talk about, or at least grab the mic and talk about that. Because we have had team members here who have worked over there. We have four team members that are currently working in both places, okay? And so I, I'd like to, you know, give them the opportunity to talk about what, what this move could mean to our program here, what it might mean for the quality of life for, for residents. So you don't have to hear it from me, because I don't have that experience. Yeah, so we're going to spend the, the first few months just learning, and then we'll figure out, and as we're doing that, we're going to be figuring out how to integrate the, the services. We already have some things in mind, but it's not fleshed out yet. And I think it would be, it would be rather, I don't know, arrogant to think that we can flesh it out before going over there and actually seeing what, what, you know, what's going on. Okay. Meeting over, we're done. I'll see you. Okay. So what I'd like to do is ask a couple of our team members to give a, a little bit of a testimony as to their experience over there. And I know we have, I don't see him, we, I know we have some customers, residents that also have experience over there. So if you do, please, please raise your hand. We'll give you a mic if you want to make a comment, and then we'll open it up for back and forth for questions. Okay. Did you want to say something, Peg? Please, yes. What's that? Oh, okay. Why don't you leave the mic there and just come on up then?
I follow directions really well. I actually opened, at the time it was called Arden Courts, now Meadow Mills. I opened that community, so it's very near and dear to my heart. I worked there for seven years. I was what is called the salsa, the supervisor of assisted living here in our building that's currently Michelle's stocking. So I was in charge of all the clinical services. For those of you that know me well, know, know that my love is dementia services. That's been my passion for my whole career. Probably don't know that because many of you haven't needed to have me help you with your dementia, but that is really my love. I was so excited when Mike mentioned it because I can't tell you how well that community is set up for the success of the people that live there. There's total freedom. They are houses that they do reside in. The bedrooms are purposefully small because they're only in there to sleep. They really are members of a household. So they're out and about, they're in the living room, and they're in the kitchen. They help with, you know, meals, they, they help. They are so engaged. It's nothing that we could have ever replicated here because of our confined space upstairs. I tried, let me tell you, because I had that experience. I, I, Blanche, I see you in the front. I, I took care of Blanche's dad over there many moons ago. It, it is really a wonderful community, and the residents thrive. The residents that used to move in were mainly living at home, and families were frustrated because it's hard. I mean, those of you that have partners, spouses that have dementia know what it's like to be a 24-hour caregiver. When the residents used to move into Meadow Mills, it was life-changing, not only for the family that now could just come and visit and have quality time because the care needs were taken care of by us, but I saw residents thrive because now they had freedom, they could go outdoors, they would go out. There was, there's so many exits in this community, which most of you are thinking, oh, oh, exits, but there's only one that's secured because it's the only one that would lead outside of a confined space. But you don't feel confined because the fencing is far, you know, far from the building. I would have residents go out the kitchen door, would go out with their friends, would take a walk, come in 10 minutes later into another kitchen door, and they would tell me about their adventures that they were on. I would have people say, oh, I just went to Orange to visit my friends. It was just, you know, and we lived in their world, you know? Everybody was well-trained. You know, we didn't say, you didn't go to Orange, you just went out the back door. We were like, oh, so what did you do when you were in Orange? So the staff is well-trained. I, I can't tell you enough how excited I am about this venture. I think it's going to add so much to those of you that will have spouses or hopefully not yourselves, but, you know, we don't know our own futures. But, you know, I think the fact that you're going to be there, we're going to take such great care of you.
Thanks, Peg. So I'm going to ask Karen Russell to, you want to come up? Okay. Ask Karen Russell to come up. Questions after Karen or any other staff want to talk, and then, come on up, Karen. So Karen, as most of you know, run, runs our memory support services on the sixth floor now. So I asked her just to say a few words about the prospect of, of moving over to Meadow Mills and the impact that it would have on the team and the customers up there.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to echo Peggy's sentiment. I was, for the past probably eight years or so, more dedicated to folks living with brain changes, and that goes beyond memory. Some residents with, living with brain change have very good memories but have difficult, other difficulties like perceptual abilities or difficulties. But I'm, I can't be more excited to have the option of this type of living environment for folks. I'm especially excited about the outdoor space, and it's very large. Those of you who have helped me with the patio on the sixth floor and our tomato plants and everything, there's much more room for gardens, feeding the birds, or whatever the particular interests are that give meaning and purpose to someone living with the brain changes. So the families especially that I've worked with over the past years, and this, and very, almost identical, the four different households, have really been shocked themselves because at first glance, you know, it's very difficult to make these decisions with your family member. But they have all been, I, I, almost all of the families I've worked with or care partners I've worked with have been thrilled to have their family member actually gain more independence because they can find their way. It's set up where you can find your way with the households. There's individual porches off of each kitchen, or excuse me, individual patios off of each kitchen area, and then there's community space that's larger than ours here up on the sixth floor. Large community space, there's kitchen that they have coffee and social hours. Many times activities are going on at the same time depending on people's interests. But there's a large patio off the back, community room, which is really lovely. So I couldn't be more thrilled to be part of the, the community and having that option for our folks living with brain changes and anything you all need or questions. I too probably don't know the answer, but again, I'm thrilled to be part of the community and, and looking at, at a living situations that, I don't know, I can't say enough about it. So I thank you all, and please feel free to holler with any questions.
Thanks, Mike.
So Karen has, she was saying, you know, she's provided services, therapy services in that environment for the last eight years, right? That's what you're saying? Yeah, yeah. So she has firsthand experience with it. Are there any other team members that would like to say something? Wanda? I, I'm just asking if you want to, you don't have to.
This is a big deal because I do not like speaking in public. So I worked at Arden Courts, now Meadow Mills. I was there for 14 years. I was 22. Peggy actually hired me, and I had the pleasure to meet Blanche and Al Augustinelli. I took care of her father and her mother, so we have a close bond. I believe in the concept, I believe in the community, I believe about what it stands for. It gives residents a sense of purpose and comfort. They have created a safe place for residents struggling with dementia. So I'm passionate about dementia care. As many of you know, I used to work up in memory support as well, so I'm just elated that we have this great opportunity to just give our residents the quality of life that they deserve, and we can do that at Meadow Mills. That's it.
Thank you. There you go. Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay. So I'm going to ask you, we are recording this, so I'm going to ask you, I know you have some questions or comments, so we have some mics floating around, so I'm just going to, I'll acknowledge you, and if you just wait, there will be a mic in your hand momentarily, and you can ask your questions and make your comments. Alda? She's over here, Rob.
So you're in there.
Yeah, there it is. Look at that.
All right. I, you know, I went to visit that place many, many years ago because I had an acquaintance in New York City who was looking for a place to be. And when I went there, I was told then it was a very expensive place to be and say, and the family had to shell up all the expenses. If the family didn't have any money, you could not go there. So that was such a point. But what I want to know is, you told us there are four units, 15, 16 each?
Fifty. One five.
So you mean there are 150 residents there now?
No. There are four, oh, 60. I'm sorry, I thought you said 60.
Yeah.
Sorry. There are four households of 15 residents.
Exactly.
60 residents, yes.
So I want to know what say, how many people are there now? How many residents do say now?
So we think there are about 53, 54. It fluctuates on a daily basis.
Really?
Yeah. So 54 out of 60 of the, of the accommodations are filled.
Yeah, but then it's not enough room for other people from upstairs to go.
That's right. There isn't enough room today. So what we have to do is do something we're used to doing. We, we've done it with the Health Center since we opened.
Yeah.
And that is manage the admissions that are going in over across the street and manage our flow here so that when we close, we can start transitions. We expect those transitions to take a, take quite a while. They're not going to happen overnight. Not all the residents, not all 11 residents who are currently living on the sixth floor will move over immediately. It'll happen over time. Each person has their own pace. Each family will be comfortable with a different pace, and we want to respect that and make sure that we, we accommodate their comfort level as, as they move over. Over that period of time, we know, just from our experience, that there will be discharge, discharges or vacancies, and once we can control the admissions over there, we will not be taking people from the outside until we satisfy the demand internally, and then we can backfill from there.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to change the name?
Are we going to change the name? Well, it was suggested to me this morning at our first meeting with team members that we change the name.
And what's the name going to be?
I have no idea what the name's going to be. We could have a contest, maybe you can, you have a suggestion? I, I, this is what our, so this was a, I had a meeting with, with some of the team members at 6:15 this morning, and these were aides and a nurse in the memory support, right, that we have here. And the aides, one of the aides said to me, you need to put Whitney Center's name on it. Once you put Whitney Center's name on it, it, it will bring a level of quality, understanding of quality.
I have one more question.
You, that's two now, okay.
So your question is, so when people are there and say we'll get sick, say we'll come to our health center, right?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
So you say we have a health center over there?
No. So, here's the thing. We, we are a community with an underlying philosophy of self-determination, engagement, and fulfillment. That self-determination, our belief in that, means that you, you get to choose how you want to live out your life. You get to choose where you want to receive those services. Now, almost all of you have chosen to come here to Whitney Center with a contract that, that allowed, that affords you services as you need them, and that could be in, in the memory support, it could be in the Health Center, or it could be in your apartment. In very much the same way, respecting people's right to choose, if they, if a resident at Meadow Mills decide, needs skilled level nursing and decides that they don't want to go to a nursing home, they have the option to bring in a certified home care agency to provide those services. Under our assisted living license, we wouldn't be able to provide those services, but they can certainly, yet, but they could certainly contract to bring those in if they chose to stay there. Just like you can here. Okay?
Am I on?
Do you want to get Betsy next? Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Thankfully, I have a few questions because Alda asked a couple of them.
Good.
But what I'm interested in is, did they, are they fully staffed, and how did they get through COVID? And I know we, we don't have a full staff here and need it, and I wondered how, if they're fully staffed there now.
It doesn't appear that they're fully staffed. You know, they, you know, we, we've, we see payroll records, but we're still trying to reconcile what their staffing roster actually looks like, what their staffing plan looks like compared to their actual payroll. So, and there was overtime, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, there was overtime on the payroll registers that we've been getting through ownership, so that tells us that they're not fully staffed because people are picking up extra shifts.
But they haven't had to reduce their occupancy.
They did, actually.
Or they did reduce.
Yes. So when COVID hit, they actually closed down, they were operating in the low 50s out of 60. Then they closed down a whole household.
Oh.
And they operated like in the low 40s because their, their capacity was 45 with three households.
Right, right.
So they operated that way, and then last December, I think they reopened that fourth household, and, you know, they're now up around 53, 54, last we, we checked, we heard.
And, and the last thing is, I've had experience with the Connecticut Alzheimer's Research Center in Suddington.
Yeah.
Which is well-known for its care for memory patients. And I, I haven't been over there, but it sounds like it's set up in the same way, and that makes me feel very good, like they.
Yeah. Yeah. The Alzheimer's Resource Center is a fantastic organization. I know them pretty well. They're called Live Well now. They changed their name, and they're doing some stuff, some cool stuff up there. Yeah, it, it's, their setup's a little different, right? But philosophy is very much, very similar.
It sounds very exciting.
Yes.
Thank you. It is very exciting, but I'm concerned about what happens with the people in our healthcare center and how we provide services and how we coordinate it all.
Okay. So I just want to be clear with terminology. So our healthcare center is our skilled nursing home, right? So that's a separate service than our memory support services, our dementia care services that are currently on the sixth floor. So none, so what we're talking about does not pertain to the Health Center, okay, or the skilled nursing service.
So will this affect our healthcare center positively?
Um, will this affect our healthcare center positively? I, you know, I don't think it's going to have an effect because if there's a referral from Meadow Mills, we could take that today, right? So it's not like we're going to generate more business because we're, you know, we now own it in the, in the Health Center. So I don't think- Will this affect our health care center positively? I, you know, I don't think it's going to have an effect because if there's a referral from Meadow Mills, we could take that today, right? So it's not like we're going to generate more business because we're, you know, we now own it in the health center. So I don't think it's going to have a material effect on our health center operation.
And the coordination that hopefully will evolve from, considering total health care.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
How are we going to do that physically?
Yeah. I think that's part of, that's part of the thinking and the, you know, the planning that we need to engage in. So we're blessed in that Peggy opened that building. She understands how it works. Now, we have to catch, get up to speed on how they're currently operating. Peggy also started community health services here. So we have the perspective, and we're gathering more perspective, to help us coordinate this, managing.
Physically? How, if I as a member of Whitney Center community want to keep in touch with someone across the street, how is that going to happen?
How can you envision that happening?
I don't know. I'm thinking of working with Hamden and establishing walking, walking lights, signal lights, that kind of thing.
Okay, I'm going to write that down. Okay, so here's, so I knew this would come up. I guessed it would come up. Yeah, so we have to figure this out, right? There is going to be a need for residents who live here to go visit friends and loved ones across the street. Now, I could dance my way around the answer, the question, by saying, you know, if we built the building to the north end on the campus, it would be just as far. Okay? That's not going to satisfy, that's not going to give you an answer. Here's the answer. We put in to the financing budget, money for two vehicles. Two electric golf carts that are enclosed and heated, okay? In fact, Mark, I don't think Mark's here, right? Mark and I saw these at a conference in Roanoke, Virginia, at the hotel we stayed at. And it was, they were perfect. Heated and easy to drive. They don't have to be registered as street vehicles or anything like that. So we have to figure that out. We have to factor that into the program. And it's not only for our residents. Transportation is a staffing issue as well. I was just talking to one of our, one of our aides who takes the bus here, has to come here three hours, four hours before her shift starts because the bus stops running to this bus stop, then waits, works, and then, you know, on the other side, has to go home. And when she doesn't take the bus, she pays for an Uber or Lyft, which is about an hour's pay for her. That's terrible. We got to figure out something, right? And so, so this internal process that we're thinking about will accommodate staffing as well. But it also gives us a bigger footprint on Leader Hill, which I think gives us a little bit more clout with the town to talk about things like accessibility, traffic easing, and speed control, bus routes, right? So we really, so we're establishing a little bit, you know, a bigger base so that we can maybe get to the table and have some influence on how those things get organized. Yes, Denise?
This is related to what you've been talking about. But if we are to expand to both sides of the street, is there any chance of persuading the town that the speed limit on that street be reduced to 25 miles an hour and enforced?
I think we could, the town can post anything they want. I think you hit it on the head. Enforcement's the key. And frankly, I don't think, this complete speculation. I don't think that the Hamden Police Department has the personnel, right, for that, for active enforcement. So, traffic controls, speed controls, mechanical controls might be the way to go. You know, for a period of time, they had the solar-powered speed sign, right? That told you how fast you were going, slow down, that kind of thing. And it seemed to, it seemed to have an impact, actually. But things like speed bumps, I think, would be very helpful. And we, and like I said, we will have a, sort of a little bit more standing to go to town. And if we work with Aces, I think we can really make an impact. I don't believe that the ownership of Meadow Mills has been involved in any conversations, as far as I know, they, you know, could be, with the town regarding this. But we will be on behalf of both properties. So I, there is a chance, yes. I think we will have a little bit louder voice in that conversation.
So you mentioned that they were for-profit. Have they been making a profit? And what's the plan of paying back, paying the bonds? And all that sort of financial?
Yeah, yeah. So they are, they are for-profit organization, which is essentially a tax status, right? That doesn't really have anything to do with how much profit they're actually generating. But, that said, they've been generating enough profit. From what we can see, and we only have a couple of years of unaudited financial statements, so Jeff has pieced it together. They were spinning off enough cash from operations to pay themselves a management fee. So the way a lot of these things are structured is the ownership will often either partner with or create an arm for management services. They might have a real estate arm, right, and/or a financial back office arm. And then from the properties that they own, which is 30 in this case, they pay themselves. And so a portion of the net profits go to paying themselves as the owner, as the management firm, and so on. So yes, there's been, you know, it's been profitable to that level. Not, not high, the margin is, it's a couple of percentage points, it's not huge. That said, if we, a lot of this, a lot of our ability to finance this in a way that generates a profit is going to be determined by the interest rate that we end up settling on. If it's above 6%, it's going to be really, really tough. We're, right now, we put 6% into the, into the bond modeling because we wanted to build a cushion. We think, we think we can come in a little, a few basis points under that. That said, to carry that debt service with the little bit of margin they were generating, isn't doable. That's why I mentioned the six-floor apartments. The revenue from the six-floor apartments would go, would be packaged in with this financing. And that component helps to cover the debt. So it's not, it's not resting on, the burden isn't on Whitney Center proper. The deal is self-supporting. Does that make sense? Kinda? Yeah. Yeah. Your rates will not go up because we're purchasing next door. How about that? Yes, Dan?
I was thinking about, I was thinking about the visiting. And I think more than speed bumps, we could use a crosswalk with maybe a light. Yeah, I think a crosswalk would be, you know, even more important than a speed bump.
Yeah. All of that stuff, we'll go into the hopper and we'll talk with the town about it. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, let's be realistic. It's not going to happen quickly, right? But it doesn't mean we can't push for it. And in the meantime, we'll figure out what to do ourselves. Yes, Jim?
My question goes beyond the, this concept of the pods and this living concept. It seems to me it's something we ought to be looking at here for people who lost their spouse and they're living in big apartments. We do a similar thing on a smaller scale here. You know, you could go in and have a, you know, take a big apartment, make a central living area into bedrooms. I don't know, that, that concept, to me, would be a big benefit here for assisted living, I guess you'd call it.
I love it. I love your thinking. In fact, if, if we were to design a new independent living building today, that's how I would do it. I would build, I would build community space around small sets of apartments and structure it that way. In fact, some of you were involved in our planning back in 2019 as we were looking at that. And we had, we were thinking about this product, architects call it hybrid homes. They're essentially small buildings that have two or three, maybe four apartments on a floor with common spaces, and they're stacked with parking underneath. Those are, those are very popular from a demand perspective. They're not the most efficient to build because you're replicating a lot of building envelope. Instead of one big building, you have multiple small buildings. But it doesn't mean it can't be done. Yes, if we could do that here, that would be fantastic. I'll tell you this, and I'll let you make your comment. That the financial challenge with that is, if, when you come back to, if we were to try to do that, renovate our building spaces now to do that, we'd have to take revenue-producing apartments out of inventory to do it because the footprint isn't big enough, and we don't have enough common space to convert on each floor. So it becomes very difficult to fund unless we can raise money.
I'm thinking a much smaller scale, I think.
Okay.
They can do it, you know, like my granddaughter had a place, she ran up at UConn, and it was similar to that, very, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it, yes.
Four, four people sharing a place, yep.
Right, right. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, yeah, very much so. College, you know, college dorms and living accommodations are designed much more socially than we design senior housing. And it's, but it's going in that direction, which just, it's kind of common sense. What else? Yes, Joe? Hang on for the mic.
I would assume that with moving people from our sixth floor across the street, you would obviously have a much higher volume over there and a higher occupancy rate. Which should be good for business, too.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, you know, part of the study, I mentioned the feasibility analysis, right? Packed into the feasibility analysis is a whole market study. Competitive study, how, what are other like facilities doing? How, what are their occupancy rates like? How do, how do we compare pricing and that sort of thing? And that accumulates to a demand analysis. So how many people in the market area, how many individuals and families are in the market for these types of services, right? That's the supply, and then, I mean, that's the demand. And then how many, what's the supply? And they look at that ratio, and they come up with what's called a penetration rate. And that penetration rate tells you that, you know, in order to, if you're going to build something new, you have to penetrate the market, you know, 5%, 10%, which would be fantastic. The higher the penetration rate required, that means the more saturated the market is becoming. So we have a good, we have a good analysis for that low penetration rate. The thing is, that what's to our benefit is, we're not introducing new supply. We're simply shifting the same supply. In fact, we're reducing supply, if you think about it, right? We're, we have maximum 14 units on the sixth floor. Those are going away. And so we're going to the 60 now here. So that does work in our favor. Let's go. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Blanche.
That's all right.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a little bit about Arden Courts because my father was there.
Just tip that a little bit to, thank you.
Because my father was there for several years. And I have to tell you, when, we took care of him at home for quite a number of years, as we did my mother. And as probably we all know, that turned out to be very arduous, even though there were four of us pitching in, helping. Anyway, so we went to Arden Courts and we looked around. And I have to tell you how wonderful that was. The setup of the rooms, the outside, the staff, of course, you know, all the staff came here, which is one of the reasons I came here, we came here. I think people will be very pleased with what they see once people from here start moving there. I was a little concerned, I will say this, about what would happen if I needed care like that, or Al did, upstairs. But this is much more room. People will have much more room over there. And people can go out, one door, go outside and walk, which is so important. Come in another door, there are activities. So I'm, I'm very happy that people are thinking about purchasing it.
Yeah. Thank you for that testimony.
And Blanche, we're in this together.
Yes, go.
I would just like to ask about the, one of the concepts that came up in some of the earlier meetings. And that is, they were talking about a residence living there. So what about the people that want to do a partial day or a full day of daycare and go home?
Yeah.
Will that new facility accommodate that? Or are we going to accommodate it here? Or are we not going to provide it?
Yeah. So as I was reviewing my notes from all the meetings, that daycare idea had the most hits. It was the most popular idea that came up collectively. And so that's, that'll be a priority for the board as we think, think through that. In the meantime, what can we do? Well, I don't know this for a fact that we could use it that, this way. But there are a couple, there's a big community room over there, and then there's a smaller room, and then we have the households, right? And so I don't know if it's possible to use that as a day program. That's space over there now, but that's something we'll look at. Like I said, we have to learn about the operation, you know, as it's running currently. Now, as we think about the future of the, of the health center proper, the building, and what capacity we go back to in terms of the number of beds, and whether that leaves open space, that's part of the thinking for that space as well. So we've got a couple of options. But this, but this day center idea is something that I think is a critical part of enabling people to choose to stay home. Because that, that respite, that break, that, those services that could be provided efficiently in a congregate setting like a day program would, I think, would make the choice much easier and much more manageable. So we're on the same page. Doc?
Well, Meadow Mills now will be at capacity with a waiting list. Unfortunately, that population is growing. And is there an opportunity to build a fifth pod out there?
Great question. I don't know if you heard, is there an opportunity to build a fifth pod or build onto Meadow Mills? So we looked at the building, and we looked at the property with that in mind, right? To see what future, you know, opportunities might there be. And yes, there's just plenty of space to preserve the open space, the walking paths, the picnic areas, barbecue areas, and maybe add some building. The nature of that, right, is yet to be determined. We'd have to study it. It is, it is a wood stick-built frame. So a second floor would be much more difficult if we were to decide to do something like that. But it's not impossible. But we've already had architects give us a, sort of a topical overview of what could be done. And we certainly could add on if we so choose. Yes, Jim?
Let's just make a comment from the Meadow Mills standpoint. You know, I went through the last year of my corporate life, I had to take over by another company. And it produces, and there are a lot of promises made, and then weren't kept. So, you know, it's very important that our staff be really in comfort with the fact that there'll be a new boss.
Yep.
that there'll be a new boss, and, you know? Because over time, things will change.
Yeah.
So they need to be aware of that.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you. Thanks for that warning. Um, yeah, you know, we, um, we're being very, very thoughtful about how that, all of that's going to work. How we engage the, um, the team members that are already there, um, what our plans are to evaluate all of the jobs, to evaluate, um, what are duplicative roles that we have here, that they have there, and to see how these things mesh. And so by the time we close financing, we'll have a plan in place, and we will, we will have had conversations with everyone, um, you know, whom we feel, you know, doesn't have a role there, but they may have an adapted role, or it may be a role here. So we have to look at all those options. There are, there are registered nurses on staff over there. We could use registered nurses, you know? I mean, so we have to look at those kinds of opportunities. But thank you for that.
Mike, how many, how many staff are there over there?
Rough, uh, we counted from the payroll register, about 66, 67. Um, that's total staff. Um, now, on a, on a, on a payroll register, I don't know if they're all getting paid on a bi-weekly basis. So, but those are the total number of people employed.
Just a silly thing to think about. I've never seen it. Is there a film or something that shows the, the buildings and how it works? Or is there some way to go visit at some point?
Yeah.
Just to think about it for the future.
Yeah, well, I, I was on a call, on a Zoom call earlier with some family members of our residents in memory support, and, um, we talked about doing tours. Once, once we close, we don't want to disrupt them too much, but.
Right, no rush.
But, yeah, we talked about doing tours and, um, and the, the residents and families in memory support, and those needing memory support more immediately would have a priority for tours, right? We would start doing those so we could see it. I, I looked at, their website doesn't have a whole lot of, um, pictures of the interior spaces and layout and so on. Um, but I'm going to, um, work with Raf and Nick to, um, try to use, um, K4, the K4 platform, to provide updates. Um, also, we're going to create a form for your questions, and we're going to see. And, and I'm hopeful, can we, I could probably post the footprint, you know, any pictures of the footprint of the building, that sort of thing. So we're gonna, we're gonna look at utilizing that, um, for sharing this information.
The website lists a video that's available right now.
I think it's like a testimonial, right? There's a, in the middle, it's.
I have one.
Yeah, it's a guy standing on the porch, and I, I think it's a testimonial as to the impact to their family. Um, I don't think it's a, a guided tour. Right, right. Blige, I want to ask you a, a question if I could. So when you first, so one of the things that, um, uh, people are reacting to are some of our team members and some, some customers, is the size of the rooms, right? And, and we have to make a very difficult sort of paradigm shift, thinking about apartments here and bedrooms over there. And so can you talk about, like, when you went there and looked at it, what you thought? And then ultimately, I think you talked about how it worked out. But can you say a little bit more about that, your experience?
So, Mike, unfortunately, my memory isn't great about the size of the room. So I'll just, that part I'll just ask you about.
Okay.
It was a single person.
Yeah. So there are single bedrooms essentially, right? With full bathrooms, but they're, but they're not apartments, like we would know here.
No, so, which is, was good, because you want people to come out of their room, to mix. And, um, you know, they don't have the verbal skills to probably, some people wouldn't have the verbal skills to make conversation. So it's nice to be with people around the breakfast table, lunch, so forth. Um, I think my father fit, was a very, uh, independent person, and, uh, we spent a lot of time thinking about where he would fit in. And I think it was perfect there because people had a bedroom, but it wasn't huge. They, they ate at a table with other people. They could go out a door at any time and walk around the grounds. Um, staff were wonderful. Uh, they were engaged.
I think Al wants to say something.
I remember the.
Oh, Al.
Okay.
I remember the size of the room, uh, very well, and, and it's just perfect.
Okay.
A person, uh, my father-in-law just went in there and rested, slept. He had all of the whatever. I believe he had a television in there, did he not? Yeah, things like that. Just enough to make you, and then he walked out, and, and all of a sudden, he became known as Uncle Lou.
Uncle Lou.
And everybody knew him, a very, very.
That's great.
Quiet guy.
Yeah.
It was, it was excellent, excellently.
Thank you, thank you.
So the rooms are small, but, um, they have like a single bed, a nightstand, and a dresser.
Okay.
And everyone has their own bathroom.
Okay.
So we have a common living room space as well.
Okay.
Do they have doors?
Yes.
Yes, there's doors.
Yes, they have their own private bedroom, yes.
Private bedroom and bathroom.
Yes.
Do people have their own television sets?
Some people, yes.
Yes, if you choose to have a TV in your bedroom, I'm sure you, you can, yeah.
So that, I just thought about how people would be encouraged.
Whether, how people would be encouraged to go out.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, so we want to encourage, not mandate, right? We don't want to prescribe how you spend your day, so if you choose to watch TV, you choose to watch TV in your bedroom, right? Uh, we don't want to force you to, to have fun. Yes?
One comment. Currently, if you have a, a couple here, and one of the partners requires native memory support.
Yes.
It's very easy for that person to go up to the sixth floor. In the future, it'd make it much more difficult.
Mm-hmm.
The person would have to go across the street, and if the person who's here can't go across the street, there'll be some difficulty.
Why couldn't the person, why couldn't the person who's here can't, why can't they go across the street?
Yeah, no, the, the person who requires support goes across the street. The person remains here, could also be very elderly, couldn't walk very well.
Oh, I see, if they have ambulation issues.
Yeah, very hard for that person to get across the street. Here it's much easier.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So that's why we have to figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why we put money in the budget for the transportation, because that, we know that.
Okay.
That's going to be a challenge. See, at the end of the day, there are going to be negatives to this, to this, um, decision, okay? What we have, what we have to do is weigh the benefit, um, which is, which is heavily weighted in, in terms of the quality of life of the person living in, in, you know, in the dementia care, um, facility, with the quality of life aspect of loved ones visiting and, and connecting. Both of those things are important, right? But as we look at the positives and negatives, in my mind, the quality of life aspect for the person that's living there, i- it wins out. Um, so what we have to do is supplement that, those, those negative, um, or address those, those negatives with whatever solutions we can come up with. We think that this golf cart idea, it's going to take staff, it's going to take volunteers, but the, the idea that it's a golf cart is, I, I like that because frankly, I, I don't want to say it now, but, uh, yeah, I, well, we're going to figure that one out. Yes?
So I'm curious about, um, how the cooking works over there. In each pod, do they determine their own menus? Or is there a central decision about the cooking? And will those kitchens be connected to our health center rules the same way our kitchen is?
Yeah. Okay, so there's a lot of questions in that. What, what I'll say is this, um, right now, the way it operates is that there's a small central kitchen, and there are like two, two cooks in the kitchen, that's it. And they wash the dishes and they do everything that you would in your home. They produce the food, they, they take it to each household. And then each household, then, they have a kitchen. And then they finish plating or finish it in the household, and then they serve, and then they wash dishes, they have dishwasher, they wash the dishes. Pots and pans go back to the central kitchen, from what I understand, right? Is that how it works? Yeah, so, so it's a, it's a very efficient operation. Now, when we, so that's the way it currently operates. When we think about how we're going to integrate our dining, uh, services, our food service with that, we've got, we've got to look at the relationship, um, with that. And I think there are opportunities, there's certainly opportunities there. As far as how the menu gets created, I don't know, Peg or Wanda or, oh, Colleen, you know? Okay. So Colleen actually used to work there, too. She, she was the marketing person for five years over there.
For five years. Um, how it does work now is it's a corporate menu. So the corporation.
Oh.
Is issuing to their communities what the weekly.
Okay.
Okay, but, you know, we do have to remember that they are doing a lot of the, uh, soft foods.
Yes.
Okay, that they're prepping over there. Dreah has been there cooking forever, she's phenomenal. And you're right, she produces the food. The food goes to each house. The aides in the house serve the food. And then do the dishes and everything, and that's, you know, three meals a day. And each kitchen has snacks. So if somebody gets up at 2:00 in the morning.
They could just help themselves?
They help themselves, or the aides can, they have soups and drinks and ice creams, things like that, that are staples in the kitchen.
Yeah. So I'll say a couple of things more in, to round out the answer, Chris. Um, like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna evaluate what's happening there for a number of months. We're gonna learn. Um, Thomas and his team will be looking at that. And if, and whatever opportunity we have to supplement, to, to, you know, to help things be more efficient from a quality perspective, those are the kinds of things we'll work on. We don't, we can't answer exactly what that means today.
But are we connected to the health center rules?
Right, that's, so that's the last thing I, I want to answer. Are we connected to the health center rules? So currently, uh, managed residential communities and assisted living, um, services licenses do not have the same requirements that a skilled nursing facility has currently. I can tell you, since COVID, a lot of the standalone, um, assisted livings, and specifically dementia care, specialty dementia care facilities, they got hit pretty hard, um, by COVID. And so the knee-jerk reaction, um, from a regulatory standpoint is, let's create more rules so that we can prevent this in the future. There's a window of opportunity to, to get in there and do things before, but, before any such legislation actually comes to fruition, but I can tell you it's on the horizon. There, there is a legis, state legislator that had a bad experience with, I think, her mother, um, in such a facility, and wants to clamp down on all facilities accordingly and make it more like a skilled nursing. That's just, that's just part of the, the deal, right? We, we're going to have to deal with that.
I mean, you couldn't separate it the other way and take our kitchen therefore out of the health center requirement and move it over so it, you know?
Oh, no, no, no. They're, they're licensed completely separately. Yeah. The, the kitchen and dining service is a component of the skilled nursing operation, and is therefore subject to the rules of, uh, CMS and DPH.
License to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. It seems to me that more and more people living here with memory problems are staying in their apartments with aides. How will affect the need for people to be going over to Meadow Mills?
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think there will be an effect. In, in fact, um, I was presented with something similar earlier this morning, and I, um, I asked the question, if we had a different setup on the sixth floor, would, because we have a couple that's, is choosing to stay in the apartment rather than move to the sixth floor. And, and, um, I asked, if we, if the sixth floor was set up like across the street, would they have moved? And the answer was yes. So they're not going specifically because of the, the physical space that's up there now. So I, I think there will be some transition along those lines. But then again, um, as people choose to bring more services into their apartments, that's their choice. So I'm not, I don't think it'll have, uh, a substantive impact where we'll see a, a sort of a mass movement of residents over there as soon as accommodations become available. Yes?
I just have an anecdotal comment. I had lunch yesterday with a friend who has been looking at Whitney Center. Her husband has, um, he was having some physical problems and also some dementia, but not exactly Alzheimer's. And she had him, they live in Florida in the winter and Branford in the summer, and they come back up to Branford for the summer, and she had, she's had aides with him. And he was kind of sitting in his office with the aide and not really doing all that much. And she's moved him to a place in Branford. Um, I don't know if it's Art, I'm not sure what the name of it is, but he, she said, what?
Artists, artists.
Okay, she's moved him to Artists. She doesn't necessarily want to do that forever, but she said he's become so much more independent. He's got a wheelchair, he can take himself all over the place, he's got activities.
Yep.
She goes to see him like every other day, and he said he's very happy, and he's doing so much better than he was at home with an aide.
It's good to hear. The, um, the company that started the Art in Courts, what is now Meadow Mills, that model, HCR Manicure, they actually, um, flipped, and now they're doing Artists. So it's the same design, very similar philosophy and design.
And she will be very interested to learn this because she might.
Yeah, great.
Want to come here.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, it is five minutes to 12. We're 25 minutes over our regular allotted time. Any, any last, this won't be the last time for questions or input. Like I said, we're going to look at K4. You can always drop me a note, um, send me an email. Um, any la, last comments or question? Esther, well, Esther, you're, you'll wrap us up.
Okay. Now you have two more meetings scheduled. Um, is this, these meetings going to be a repetition of what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Or if we're here, uh, we may not need to go to the other two meetings? How do you feel about that?
Yeah, so you don't need to come to the other meetings, because I'm basically going to say the same thing. Um, if you have such a keen interest, though, um, there were, there were folks who attended all the meetings last round, and they learned some things, and they helped me answer some things. So you're welcome if you want to come. Okay? Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it.